All right, this is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista, August 3rd. It's a first order of business is to say pledge of allegiance. So I'm going to call the meeting to order, I guess that's the first order. And next is to say the pledge of allegiance. Does anybody want to volunteer?
This is John T., I can do it.
All right, John, thanks, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll do introductions and roll call. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. And also present here this evening are council members Shannon Bruce.
Here.
John Trumperland.
Here.
Mike Molitor.
Here.
Pam Mortenson.
Here.
Our city clerk, well, we're not sure. Chris Lindquist, are you there? We're not sure.
Yes, Mayor, I am here.
Right, you're there. And we have Director of Administration, Ally Palpos.
I'm here.
And Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
We have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Folsky.
I am here.
Is there anybody else from WSB this evening?
No, not tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have our city administrator, Mike Barone.
I am here.
Finance Director Brian Grimm.
I'm here.
And Community Development Director David Abel.
I am here.
Our Chief of Police, Paul Falls.
Here.
And our attorney with Kennedy and Graven, Ron Beatty.
Here.
All right, I think I got everybody. So with that, I need approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll move, this is Pam.
All right, Pam has made that motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
I'll second it, Shannon.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Bruce. All in favor, signify with aye. Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mortenson? Aye. Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whelan. Motion passes, 5-0. So tonight, we don't have any special presentations. Mr. Barone, do we have any emails that need to be read under persons to be heard?
Uh, Mayor and Council, no, we do not.
All right, so we'll move on to consent agenda items. We have A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Approve our city, A is approve a city council special meeting minutes from July 9th, 2020. D is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from July 20th, 2020. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to approve the home occupation conditional use permit for Benjamin Bjorklund at 6225 Sunny Fields Road East. E is a resolution to approve variances for Jeffrey and Amanda Dishimer at 3399 Kings Point Road. And F is to approve a variance for Joshua and Jennifer Riff at 4779 Crane Island. And G is a resolution to approve an extension to the variance approval for Elliot and Christina Louch at 4896 Red Oak Lane. Are there any that you wish to remove?
This is John T., I have a question on B.
Okay, so we'll remove B. Are there any others? All right, hearing none, then the consent agenda remains A, C, D, E, F, and G. Is there a motion to approve those agenda items?
This is Shannon.
This is Pam, I'll move.
And I'll second.
All right, so Ms. Bruce. Okay, Ms. Mortenson made that motion and Ms. Bruce seconded. So all those in favor signify with aye. Ms. Mortenson? Aye. Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whelan. Motion passes, 5-0 for A, C, D, E, F, and G. Mr. Trumperland, you had a question on B. That is approval of the city council regular meeting minute from July 20th.
Yes, just a clarification, maybe I'm not reading it right or reading something into it. On the top of page 8 of our packet, this sentence reads, he, which was referring to Mr. Falls, he would like to see the local emergency order, and then it's period. Um, being we already have the local emergency order in place, I assume should the word continued be there? Or do you read it differently than I'm reading it?
Yeah, I think you're correct. I think it should say, he would like to see the local emergency order continued. Mr. Falls, is that, would that be accurate?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, yes, that sounds accurate to me.
All right, thank you. That's a minor change, with that change, are there any other changes?
I have none.
All right. All right, then would you like to make a motion to approve those minutes with that one change?
I'll move.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it, Pam.
All right, so a motion has been made by Mr. Trumperland and seconded by Ms. Mortenson to approve the city council regular meeting minutes from July 20th, 2020, with that one minor change, would say continued, the order continued. With that, and all those in favor signify with aye. Ms. Bruce, how do you vote? Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Maybe you're, okay. Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so motion passes, 5-0. So next, we go on, public hearings, we have none this evening. And then we have three business items. We'll start with our stormwater assessment management program, or swamp update, I believe that'll be Ms. Folsky.
Uh, I think I'll start with that, Mayor.
Okay.
And I'll let Allison kind of chime in. So both Allison, Gary, and I met a while ago, between the last council meeting and this one, to discuss the swamp. And the staff report, I take you back to the fact that we discussed this at our June 1 council meeting. It was supposed to be in May, but we got delayed because of a topic that came up in the work session that we just kicked this down the road a couple of weeks. So if you recall that during our discussion, that the one main recommendation that came forth from the council was to lower that swamp survey score threshold from 75 down to 65. And then you directed us to put together a draft informational letter, which you see from Ms. Folsky in the packet. That is a template, it's not, and we use the Hunter's Crest area as the template item. But I just wanted to review what was included into the packet. And I put together this spreadsheet, I mean, I've seen the spreadsheet from the engineers, and it's very fine, but to me, you know, when they were just all ranked numerically, it just looked like a numbers mush to me. So what I wanted to do was to sort this out in my own mind. And so I put together a spreadsheet. And what I did was, I broke it out by the homeowners association or other ownership group, and then adjusted the swamp scores down to the 65 threshold. I also put in this table, what the scores are for 2020 and what they're predicted to be in 2030. That doesn't mean that's what they will be in 2030, but again, this is our best guess by the engineers for 2030. And then I compiled that data, and then at the very last page, I think there's seven pages of that, and at the very last page, I put together the, I guess, a hot sheet of the 19 ponds that currently score under 65. So those are the ones, and I broke them out, there's nine in Woodland Cove, three in Hunter's Crest, there's three in private ownership, two in Palmer Point, and then one each in Hermitage Shores, and one with the city. And so we're still working on identifying the private ponds. We, I know Mr. Molitor, last time we talked about this, didn't want them to basically get a free pass, so to speak, he wanted them identified as well. We just haven't finished that piece of it, but what I'm, what I am looking for, and I think what Allison and Gary are looking for, is where do you want to start? And we've got the data there that shows all the ponds that are under 65, would you like? And we've got, you know, I don't know, X number of years, however many the council would like to take to kind of address all these ponds. As you know, they're under the threshold, and we talked about, and you'll see it in the letter, we talked about trying to help them out by just sending a letter that says, here's your, in the Hunter's Crest case, here's your three ponds that are currently under, here's how you can find the resources, whether it's the assessment or eventually some sort of service to do mitigation. We'd be happy to help them, guide them through that. As you recall also from our June 1 meeting, we essentially decided that we were not, as the city, going to pay for those assessments. Those are essentially not all that expensive, but nonetheless, the council said, let's, let the homeowners association or whatever group is that's responsible for that pond, pay for that assessment, but we'd be happy to help them. And again, I, we wanted to make sure that we have kind of a complete picture here. So that's what we're looking for. Allison, if you wanted to address some of the technical engineering based items, you certainly can. But I was just trying to give a short overview as to what you have in your packet, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. We did an, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Barone did an excellent job explaining what's before the council this evening. The intent was to present a letter to these homeowners associations to give a best possible layman's turn overview of what the swamp program was and what the next steps are without overwhelming. And I think, I think we're very close, if not there, and looking for council's feedback on, on the letter and, and next steps to implement the stormwater, pardon me, the surface water management asset plan.
Well, with that, Council, we're interested in hearing some of your feedback, so, Mayor?
Yeah, okay, anybody have questions?
This is Shannon, I, this is Shannon, I have a question in the letter. Just, just the use of the word BMP, best management practice. That, that's a verb, and it seems to be used as a noun, and it just sort of doesn't make sense to me. Can you explain what the meaning of that is? And is it synonymous with stormwater pond?
Um, in this instance, we could go a little further into the, into the explanation of a best management practice, but you are correct, Councilmember Bruce, in this instance, it's used as a noun. So some, and perhaps we could list some examples of what a best management practice is. Sometimes they are sump manholes, sometimes they are stormwater pond, a four bay, there are a multitude of best management practices. So if that would assist in the readability and comprehension of the letter, we're more than happy to add that to the, to the letter.
Yeah, I think that might help. Thank you.
Allison, I have just a comment. Towards the end, I believe it's on page 102, it says, although the city cannot recommend companies to perform bathymetric surveys, what that basically is saying is, we don't have the ability, we don't know who to recommend. To me, it's a little bit, I think we should be clear that somehow either we have to say legally we can't recommend, or we should say it isn't the city's practice to recommend. Do you understand? Because when we just say we can't recommend anybody, you know, versus if we were to say, well, it's the, you know, I don't know, some other verbiage there that would explain why we're not recommending some companies to do it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's an excellent comment and something that we can, we can adjust to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. So all of the ones that are 65 or lower, what, what's making them slow, many of them, it says undersized and age, other than the four bays. So when we talked about the four bays, so are the four bays treated the same as ponds? I mean, do these, does Woodland Cove now have to go back and clean out their four bays?
Yes, so the, well, the intent of a four bay is to provide a smaller area for treatment before it, before the stormwater discharges into, let's say, an infiltration basin, for example. And so those four bays are intended to be, to require more maintenance, and then the larger, more expensive, in the case of an infiltration basin, the more expensive facility does not require, does not get the sediment load, and therefore is a decrease in frequency of, of maintenance. So that's what the purpose of the four bay is. So we typically do see some higher, higher cleaning frequencies. You know, similar to what the Public Works Department is doing under their MS4 permit, and going in and cleaning out some manholes and such.
Okay, but I just want to make, make it clear that they're cleaning their four bays, not their, their stormwater ponds, but anyway. Then the other thing I had a question on is, a lot of these were built prior to current standards being in place, so they're, it's called, they're called undersized. Does that also mean that they're going to have to more frequently clean them out in order to meet current standards? Or do they ultimately have to make them larger?
Um, potentially, it could be either one, Madam Mayor. It certainly depends on, you know, if the inputs into the model. So again, the model assumes that there's a certain amount of load, and perhaps we're not seeing that amount of sediment getting into the system. But that's certainly if, if an HOA wants to look at increasing the size, for example, of a four bay, so that they don't have the maintenance frequency, that's something they could certainly look at, and that, or else they can leave it as is and, and understand that they have some, some programmed maintenance needs in the area. One of the things that they would certainly consider would be how readily accessible the four bay area is, if it's difficult to get into.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Folsky, I wasn't referring to the four bays. I was referring to some of the other stormwater ponds. For instance, number 10, Palmer Point, it says undersized. Then number 15, private, undersized. Most of the ones that are, have those, these low scores, they're, they're listed as undersized. My assumption is that they're undersized because the standards changed from the time they were installed to the standards that we have in place today. And so my question is, do the homeowners, and do they realize that they're going to have to meet today's current standards? And if so, does that mean that they're going to have to clean out their undersized stormwater ponds more frequently?
Um, that's a good point. Perhaps that's, perhaps when we look, look at a system that's undersized, we could look at having a second template letter that explains, or else a follow-up letter, if you'd like, but something that explains, you know, that the rules have changed since that went in. Because yes, they, they may look at, that they may need to increase the size of their pond, or as you, as you mentioned, more frequently clean out the pond than you would in a newer development.
All right, thank you.
That's something that we can help them through with the process.
Okay. Those are the only questions I had. Uh, Council, any other questions?
This is Councilmember Molitor. So if I'm counting this correctly, there would actually be seven letters going out. I don't know if you can verify that, but I, I think that's actually a good sample size to get, kind of kick this off, and it's a good representation of the larger developments. So I'd be comfortable with moving forward on this, just to kind of, it'll serve as good pilot and also get, get the ball rolling. Second component of that is, there's one that's city of Minutrista, obviously, on this list, number five. We're not going to send the letter to ourselves, of course, but what, do we have any idea what the situation is here? Are we going to do the same thing, just have assessment done of it? Or, because that's one that'll have to be addressed separately. So Allison, what were you?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Molitor, the intent would be that I can meet with Mr. Peterson, and we can discuss what's going on with that pond, and work with our water resources team to come up with a recommendation based on what we're seeing. So certainly would be the same steps as what these HOAs are going through with the bathymetric surveys, so that you can understand how much sediment is in the basin. And then with that, you would be able to generate an estimated cost to bring the system up to the standard. So in this case, since that one, as the mayor had mentioned, is, is undersized, we could look at options on, you know, do a cost benefit analysis of, do you want to take a look at increasing the size or have more frequent cleaning?
Well, we've already gone through that exercise, several, quite a few years ago. And it was determined that it would be almost impossible to increase the size. And yeah, we've, we, you can look back at the history of it, but there's just really, it's so tight in there, there would just be no way of increasing the size of that pond. And then we also looked at the cost benefit of it, and again, it just, it wasn't there, but yeah.
Certainly, thank you for that information.
Yeah, I think Paul Hornby was our engineer at the time when we looked at that, so you can, you can check with him.
Okay.
Ms. Folsky, this is, Ms. Folsky, this is Shannon. Do we, have you identified who the private owners are of those three?
That was something that we were going to take a look at with, we would have to go back through the development files and understand how those, under what development scenario were those ponds constructed, and looking at development agreements, city council packet resolutions, those sorts of things. Try to trace it back as far as what mechanisms were intended to be in place for those privately owned. So those ones take quite a bit of research, so I don't have the answer at this time. Those are certain ones that will just require more work.
So for now, there, there will be four letters going out, not seven?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Oh, this is Pam, I just have a quick question. On the last sheet, it's got Woodland Cove, the first top, one through four. They were done in 2013, and they're four bays, so it's more than seven years. Is it very likely that they'll have to do it, like, again, before 10 years are up after they do it now?
Um, that's a great question. So what you typically see in a, in a developing neighborhood such as Woodland Cove, you see that the, the first 10 years or so that those, those BMPs or best management practices tend to fill up a little faster than they would under a fully developed condition, because you still have quite a bit of construction activity going on through the development. So I, I believe we were looking at, they were looking at that it was still basically not, an active construction site for a period of time. And I can talk to the water resources, people who do, who develop the program as well, to see at what point, when you start getting some of the information on these bathymetric surveys, how are we able, able to better refine the program to reflect what, what those bathymetric surveys are telling us, so that we have a, we can continue to improve the model.
Okay, is this something that you would talk to them when you meet with them?
Yes.
Um, it's likely that they will have to do it more often, even though it's not listed on the chart as doing it more than once at this time?
Well, we would, we would explain what the program is telling us and why the maintenance is required at this time, and, and as far as monitoring, when we anticipate the next occurrence for the maintenance, when that would pop up. Is that, is that the question, Councilmember Mortenson?
Yeah, I just, you know, if this is going to be something they have to do every 10 years at this first meeting, is it something that you bring up, that it's very likely they would have to do it more often, or just as a heads up?
Oh, correct. So yeah, we can certainly work with them and, and talk to them about, you know, when you look at budgeting for something like this, how often would you look at, how, how often would we recommend looking at budgeting for that? Understanding that it's a little bit in flux, but we can certainly work with them on that as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is John T., not, not so much a question, just appreciate everybody's input in this, the letter. I agree with Councilmember Bruce, I did struggle a little bit with reading the stormwater pond slash best practice, best management practice, in that I looked at that as being not a noun as well. But long as the reader understands, I guess, then maybe just me. Again, I think this is a good first step, and we just have four to start. The invite to sit down with them, to pick their brain, to see if they got info that we don't have on our file, I think that's great. And I certainly will be interested in what feedback we get. And also from the standpoint to see how quickly these, these associations react to the letter and are forthcoming with information. I think it's good, it's, this is a good first step.
Yep, I agree. All right, with that, so move forward. I think sending out the letter is the first step, and then meeting with them, and obviously keeping the council apprised of, of your progress, so appreciate that. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, I'd like to add one thing, this is Pam. Um, Mike Barone, I do appreciate the way, the format that you put this. It was very easy to understand.
Good job, thank you. Yep. Okay, we don't have to take any other action on that, so we'll move on to our road fund update. I believe, that's Ms. Folsky as well?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I had been tracking to provide counsel with an update on where we're at with the road fund balance. The council may recall when we were talking about 2021 street improvement project numbers, one of the questions came up, if, you know, if we're seeing projects come in lower than estimate, what would the road fund balance be at the end of the year? So that's, we can get some guidance on how much money, how much of that money would be available for a 2021 project. So Finance Director Grimm was kind enough to provide a balance, an estimated balance of $305,000 in that account. So depending on what the council is looking at for a road levy, which we discussed at the work session, that would be the funding, the maximum funding amount that we would be looking at for 2021. And included in your packet on page 104 are the three project areas that we last discussed for a local street improvement project, with the estimated project costs, the estimated assessment amount broken down for each, each of the three areas for council consideration. So again, this is an information purpose for the council, looking for if council's ready to give any direction after our discussion this evening with regards to what, what streets to include in 2021, or if there's more information that we can bring back to the council to provide that guidance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council, any questions of, from Ms. Folsky?
So this is, this is Shannon. So the $304,000 would be added to the $700,000 in the 2021 road fund, is that correct? That's the amount that we're talking about spending?
Madam Mayor, if I may answer that question, yes. Councilmember Bruce, that is correct. So we, the preliminary budget that was presented earlier included $700,000, so that would be 1,500, pardon me, 1,500,000 for 2021 local improvement projects under the current proposed budget. under the current proposed budget.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
I do have a question. This is John T. The estimated costs that we are looking at on page 104, they're from a little while ago. I think we saw some of our estimates come in this year a little bit better than we projected. What is our confidence that these numbers, the 518 and et cetera, et cetera, that those are still good, solid numbers?
Councilmember Shumpelin, that's a great observation. In fact, Mr. Peters and I were just discussing this this afternoon. So these are conservative numbers. Council may recall when we, when we first, when I first started working in Minutrista, we looked at budget numbers. We took that 2018 budget amount, we increased it by, I believe it was 18%, because some bids had come in high. And then we also looked at having an inflation factor on top of that per year. We're certainly seeing some pricing coming in lower this year under the current bidding climate. Next year, from, I, I would venture to guess that it will be a competitive bidding environment. From what we've been hearing in the industry, there will, there will not be as many local street improvement projects because funding is becoming a challenge for some of these, for some communities. So I think we are very conservative with our numbers. I hesitate to dial too far back on them, just because there is some uncertainty. But we can, I, I think we're a little conservative in some respects that we might, if council would like me to take a look at some current bidding prices and adjust the numbers accordingly. I can certainly do that and bring it back to council for discussion.
I appreciate that. I, the reason I ask is based on if we, in the budget, increase the roads to 725 instead of the 700, and we're carrying over approximately 300,000. We're getting close, from my perspective, being able to do all three of them. And I know for previous discussions, we've looked at doing two of the three, even though they're all within spitting distance of each other on the road there. So I guess I, it, for me to get a comfort level to push to be able to do all three, and I know it, I'd rather err on the conservative side as well and not get caught short. But I guess right now I'm in a quandary as to whether we have enough to be able to do all three, and if our estimates can be factually, or, and I know it's hard to say factually, but if they can be, within reason, be adjusted down a little bit and give me a little bit of a confident level. Thanks.
I'm going to weigh in here a little bit. So one of the questions I would have is, I know, we know loring is in really bad shape, and we know it needs to be done. But my question is, I know we were throwing Stone Bridge in here because of the, the location. But we also, the other thing I'm a bit concerned about is spending all of our dollars on those roads and then not having any money left over to address any of our roads that are on the cusp, where we were talking about doing the one and a half inch overlay in order to stretch the life expectancy of those roads out another seven to 10 years. So my, my thought was doing hardscrabble and loring, but then using the remain, and then we'd have a significant cushion, then using the remainder of those dollars, or at least a lot of those dollars, towards overlays on those roads that might be salvageable, if you will, for the next seven to 10 years. If we don't do that, and we wait yet another year or so before we start doing these overlays, I'm afraid those roads are all of a sudden now going to be bumped into the reclamation or reconstruction category, and are no longer candidates for the overlays. And we can see by the bids that came in for the overlays on Game Farm Circle and Retreat and Surling and Fielding Trail, we can see what the overlays cost. They're significantly less than doing a reclamation project. So I'm just wondering if we might not be more prudent to spend our dollars on hardscrabble and loring, and then using the remainder of that money on overlays. That's a thought I think we should consider. Any thoughts on that?
I think that's a very-
Councilmember Molitor?
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
I, I would agree with that approach, just once-
Okay.
Go ahead, Pam.
Pam? Yes, I agree with that as well, and I think that's very valid. I'm glad you reminded us of that. Okay. John, what do you think?
I can, yeah, I can accept that. We, of course, don't have, I don't have in front of me the ones that we had on that previous list from this, earlier this year as to who those might be. But without looking or knowing who they are, I know they exist, so I, that's acceptable.
Okay. Ms. Bruce?
I, I support that approach too. My question is, for Mr. Peters, is, are, are we going to continue just patching Stone Bridge? Because I know there are a lot of places on that road. I was on it a few weeks ago. And, but will continue patching those holes as, as they appear, correct?
Yes, that's on the list for this week to get out there and get that done.
Okay. Then I, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's fine.
The other thing I thought the council should consider, if you recall, last time, at our last meeting, we approved requesting a nearly $12,000 reimbursement for the Halsted Road Project. And, and I think we could also look at maybe an additional reimbursement. We haven't closed out that project yet with, with Minda. And so we could be eligible to ask for additional reimbursement dollars. So we've paid everything on that road, but we didn't use all of the MSA dollars that we were eligible for, for the project. And we could request additional dollars to be reimbursed for expenses that we spent. And then those dollars could go back in our road improvement fund and coffer to be used anywhere in the city. And we might want to consider that as another option to fund for more, more projects. If we did that, we might, I don't know, we'd have to see how many dollars we would be eligible for. But we might even be able to do all three, as well as some overlays. And maybe, maybe we could bring that back at our next meeting to show us what those numbers would look like? Ms. Falsky, or is the council even interested in that? Let me ask the council first.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Molitor. If you think back, part of the reason why we did this, you know, was for the analysis that we've just gone through. But the other reason was that I think you wanted to have an open house with the residents. And if you, and I, there was some discussion about possibly doing that outdoors in response to COVID. If you still want to proceed with that, you know, time is of the essence. And if you go back, and I'm not sure how much money we're talking about for MSA dollars, and I'm not sure why we went to have requested them anyhow, and why we're just coming to that conclusion now is a little bit baffling. But I'm not sure, you know, if it's enough to move the needle to get, to include Stone Bridge or not. But the more we delay this, the more difficult it becomes to have that open house. And unless we're talking about enough money, and in this case, I'm talking specifically 278,000, if that's the kind of money you're talking about, then maybe it does make sense. But I think the last MSA request we made was for about 11,000 bucks. If that's what we're talking about, that's not going to be enough to justify delaying an open house. That's my thought. Thank you.
And that's, and yes, and that's, that's the other point, the timing, I think, is, is more the issue, definitely. So yeah, I agree. Timing is, is kind of of the essence right now, so, all right. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Do we, do we have any idea how much the MSA money is? I mean, any, any estimate at all?
Ms. Falsky, do you know how much we could request for reimbursement?
I'm, I'm just trying to get it, like, my computer's lagging on me. Let's see here. I don't have it listed on that. I know Brian and I were talking about it the other week. I, I want to say it was, it was upwards, it was creeping up towards 80,000 to 100,000. I don't know, Brian, if you recall off the top of your head either. It, it was some additional funding. And the reason, just to provide a little bit of background, Councilmember Molitor brought it up. The reason additional state aid funds weren't utilized originally with the Halsted Drive Reconstruction Project was the fund balance at the time when the project was let. If, if the city had elected to get reimbursed for the entire state aid eligible cost, it would have essentially depleted that fund. My understanding is at the time, there was a desire to leave that, some money in that fund balance to fund future projects. And then as the project lagged on, and we had two years of state aid construction allocation added into that fund, it bolstered that fund balance to a point where we're now in the situation where we're at right now, where we could look at requesting additional funding.
So we're looking at about anywhere from 80,000 to 100,000 approximately is what we could request for reimbursement.
I believe it's in that range, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I, I think that's, that's significant, and I, I think we should look at doing that.
If we don't, you're just fine. Mr. Molitor? Go ahead, Mr. Molitor.
Pardon me? I was just going to say, I think- Regardless, it doesn't matter. I mean, we should, of course, go ahead and request that reimbursement. I think it's kind of silly that we're at this point. I mean, we, we've had so much in MSA dollars, we're just kind of searching for stuff we can apply it to. But it, it does kind of change the discussion again, because then it goes back to what, what Mr. Shumpelin was saying, is that, let's just say that comes through and you put 80,000 on top of that. Well, now that puts you at 1.1 million, which is almost the exact total of, including Stone Bridge. Again, we would have to not do any mill and overlay, or overlays. But it makes that, doing all three of these, actually feasible. So then, again, we have to decide if we leave Stone Bridge off, and we, whatever money we get from MSA, we just apply to overlays or carry it over to the next year? Or do we go all in and do all three of these and delay the overlays? I, I guess I can be, could go either way on that. I probably have a little bit of a preference to do what we just talked about and leave Stone Bridge off and do some overlays, just so that we're not letting everything fall by the wayside. But just wanted to kind of put that out there so people would be thinking about that. Thanks.
Well, I agree. I think, Mr. Molitor and Ms. Bruce, I, I agree. We should, we should request those additional funds, whether they're 80, 90, or 100,000. We should request those so that they come to us, and we can then utilize them in a manner that we see fit. The timing is the issue, so, but even if we get those funds, and we, let's just say we don't do Stone Bridge, we can do Stone Bridge, we can still save the funds. We don't have to use them. But what we do have to do is we're going to have to close out that project pretty soon. So if we don't request the funds now, we may lose out on, on the ability to request them in the future. So my, my recommendation is, request the funds now, whether it's 80, 90, 100,000, and get those in our coffers. Let's go ahead with loring and hardscrabble. Let's put a question mark behind Stone Bridge. I'm not sure that that's, I don't know. We, we could decide on Stone Bridge in two weeks. I would assume we would know what that, that dollar amount is going to be.
Madam Mayor, council, I think it may be more money than 80,000 to 100,000. A lot of it came down to Halsted was started back in 2017. So we've had four more years of state aid draws go into our fund, basically, of 350,000 to 400,000 a year. So I think at the time, we didn't request it off, because we didn't have that much in the fund. But I think there's eligible expenditures that, I'm talking with Allison, maybe upwards of 150,000, 200,000 or more. I thought it was a little more than the 80,000 to 100,000, but I think we just need to verify that. And if the council's direction is to bring those funds in, we may be able to add Stone Bridge easier than we thought.
Yeah, okay. I'd be on board with that.
One other quick, one other quick question. Once we find out the amount, how quickly do they move on getting us an answer?
Madam Mayor, the, the state aid accounting is fairly quick. Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, but we typically get a state aid reimbursement, I want to say, within two or three weeks of processing the request.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question for Brian. This is Shannon. I have a, I have a question for Brian. If, if we do get the MSA money into our coffers, how is that going to affect our need to increase the tax levy? Would bring it down by 100, or 200, or whatever that amount is?
Well, I think, I mean, I think that's an option. But I think otherwise, I think some of the others on council were talking about using that money to be able to add in Stone Bridge and/or do some overlay projects if we are able to get a couple hundred thousand more in. I guess that's a council decision. But I think that's where, I think the conversation was going. If we had some available funds, we'd be able to potentially do Stone Bridge and some overlay as well as hardscrabble and loring. But I guess council can correct me if I'm wrong, or the others on the council.
Okay. Well, we, we could leave that till our next budget discussion, but that's, so it's going to affect the road budget for, for next time, when we talk about that.
Right. Well, so I think one of the things tonight is definitely giving staff direction if we want to apply for those funds, because sooner than later is better. And depending on the amount of those funds, we could add, like Brian said, Stone Bridge and/or some overlays in it. So to Mike Molitor's comment about timing, Ms. Falsky, would we know in two weeks at our next council meeting what those funds are? And then would we have time enough to add Stone Bridge into the mix? If we, if that were the case, if we had enough funds for that?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, members of council, at the next meeting, I can provide a breakdown of the remaining state aid eligible costs from the Halsted Drive Reconstruction Project, and then take a look at where we're at with the, with the Halsted Mill and Overlay Project from this year. Back that number out so that the council can see what the breakdown is of that account balance for 2020, and provide direction as, as far as what, what you would be comfortable taking out in additional construction funds, and then how that would change the local street improvement project for 2021. And that would leave us timing as far as a timeframe standpoint. We could look at help holding a neighborhood meeting in September to gauge what the resident support is for a street improvement project, and then have time to complete the design through the winter and get, we'd probably be in the late February, perhaps early March bidding timeframe, which is still, where we were still seeing competitive bids come in at, at that time.
Okay. All right. Is the council on board with that, that plan?
This is John T. I agree with that.
Yes.
This is Mike. I agree as well.
Same here. This is Pam. All right. And Shannon?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay. So I think you have a plan, right, Ms. Falsky?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank, thank you.
All right. All right. So that concludes our road fund update and discussion. And so we'll move on to our CARES Act funding. I think I'll start with Mr. Barone. Did we lose Mr. Barone? Okay, are you on mute?
Nope. I, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can now hear you. Yep.
I think this headset was slightly unplugged. I didn't notice it. Yes, Mayor and Council, let me just talk a little bit about the CARES Act funding. So on July 29, they had the second phase of the CARES Act funding. A lot of it was revolving around reporting requirements. A lot of it, uh, was revolving around reporting requirements. Uh, we heard all about that. But it was a little bit more into specifics about, uh, what you can use the funds for, what you can't use the funds for. Uh, it was presented by Amy Jorgensen, who's the Director of the Minnesota Management Budget Office. Um, so there's a Excel spreadsheet and you, as a city, are required on a monthly basis to submit your costs to MMB for reimbursement. And you have seven days after, business days after the end of each month to do so. Um, you can submit, uh, for July, since we just finished July and here we are August third. Um, we've got till the eleventh. We can submit a zero. Uh, there's nothing gained or lost by that. Um, you can eventually complete paperwork at any time. The July one is going to be for, starting in March first through July, so it's kind of a big one. But even if, even though we have the money in our coffers, we don't have to apply. We still have time to, to ship that out, uh, to request those funds, uh, on a monthly basis. Um, we were told that still cities should stick to the November fifteenth deadline, uh, but they are talking about extending it, but I haven't heard anything definitively yet. Even though, when I talked with, uh, Councilmember Bruce today, she said it was till, uh, the end of November or December one, but I have not heard that myself. Um, they talked about how states are sharing their money with, uh, local cities and counties. The state of Minnesota decided to send about forty-five percent of the funding to local governments. Um, all states are kind of doing this different, but they kind of, the feds kind of gave the heavy hand. Like if you kind of just keep it all yourself state, whatever state you might be, um, you, you may be subject to audits. And so they were trying to get people to basically share the money. And so, um, some cities, uh, some states are, some states aren't, but this state is, uh, allotting forty-five percent from local governments. A couple of specific questions that came up at our last meeting about, uh, the money. One was reporting the interest. Um, yes, you can use the interest. You don't have to pay the, the interest back that we have that will accrue on the money that's sitting in our account, but you have to apply towards COVID-related things. Um, I think is the councils aware, you received a letter a few weeks back from, uh, a member of the city and also from the school superintendent. And one of the questions submitted was are schools getting money? Cause I don't think they are as far along as cities, uh, states and cities are. Uh, and they are, they're getting a lot of money from different sources. Um, and it's earmarked for schools so that, you know, it sort of lent itself to, I think the, 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 uh, nature of the emails was please consider the schools when you get your CARES funding money. And I don't think we need to actually worry about that to be specific. Um, some other questions were asked about if you have enterprise funds like golf courses and liquor stores, can you use it to replace revenue? The answer was no. You can use it to, uh, adjust golf courses or liquor stores, probably more liquor stores, to modify those facilities because of COVID nineteen, Plexiglas, et cetera. But those are the kind of questions that were asked. There were some questions on, uh, elections, classic IT. They said laptops, VPNs, hotspots are all eligible. Um, but one of the questions that came in is can you just like give a rebate to everybody that's, uh, a water user? For instance, just deduct something out of their utility bill. And you cannot do that because it's need, needs-based. Uh, you can't just do a per capita redistribution of the money. You have to, uh, basically prove that there's some sort of hardship and just giving the same amount to everybody doesn't really, uh, uh, go after that hardship angle on that. So having a chance to talk with, uh, Mr. Beatty a little bit today, and I can let Ron chime in as well. There's kind of a couple of questions that are facing us here at the city. It's, you know, do you want to keep the money or, or give it away? And I kind of think we want to keep the money and, you know, uh, that, that is, is, is kind of, uh, the council's decision obviously to make. But then it's like how to, how to spend the money and that, that's where the rubber's going to meet the road. Um, as I mentioned earlier, as far as I know, and as far as I, uh, have in talking with colleagues, that, um, we're fully good to go on utilizing that money for police department costs, for personnel costs related to those. Um, but those aren't the only costs that they're, they're good for. So tonight I just wanted to, uh, discuss this briefly, just to give you an update based on the seminar they went, we went through, uh, last week. Um, and I think at this point of what I'll do is I'll ask if Mr. Grimm or if Mr. Beatty want to chime in and discuss kind of their perspective from what they've understood, uh, about this topic. So Brian or Ron?
Um, I guess, yeah, I, I can go fir, or I can go first and then turn over, Ron. I don't know if I have much more to add to what Mike said. Um, yeah, one of the things that I guess, yeah, I learned about was the, uh, the reporting that Mike talked about, that the, um, they're putting together as far as the monthly reports that we, cities have to turn in by the tenth of each month. And that, um, as Mike stated, we don't have to declare anything on this first report. We could do it in September, October or whatever, once the council makes a final decision on, uh, what eligible costs they want to, um, to use it for. Um, and, uh, yeah, I know it was, it was just good to know the process as far as how they were wanting us to report. And we've received the funds. I think everyone knew that in hand already, the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand. But now it's just, um, the council deciding what eligible costs they want to, uh, use or, use or, um, utilize it on, I guess, so.
Adam, Madam Mayor, Council, this is Ron Beatty. I don't have a whole lot to add either, other than to reiterate what we talked about last time. The regulations do talk about, in general, the re, the costs that can be reimbursed are those related to COVID. But the big exception is with regard to, uh, public health and safety costs. As we talked last time, the regs talk about there being a presumption that those costs are related to COVID. And in fact, it, it's the full cost. So from, uh, the simplest approach probably is to simply devote the, uh, the maximum dollar amount to the police costs, which I think will entirely, uh, take up the amount of money that's been allocated to the city. Now, it may be that you want to, uh, do a little bit more nuanced approach and talk about hand sanitizers and, you know, whatever other expenses could be, uh, attributed to that and, and include those. But certainly the, I think the big bulk of the expenses, expenses are going to be in personnel with regard to public safety.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Um, Beatty. So anybody, um, now I know Ms. Bruce had sent out, um, an email to all of the council. Um, did you want to, uh, weigh in here?
Yes, thank you. I, I think this is, this is a great opportunity for the city to, um, look at some much-needed improvements to our, our city's IT infrastructure that we've been talking about and needing for a long time. And be, and I, I think that a perfect, um, it, it, it's a legitimate use because it would help us, the, the outline that I sent you, and I'm assuming you all read it. I'm not going to take the time to go over it again. But, um, using this money to hire a consultant, to come in and do a needs assessment and to guide the city on what kinds of decisions we need to make, what kind of software, what kind of software applications we need to subscribe to, to increase our remote, our remote operations and allow not just, not just staff or council, but our residents too, to, to conduct business with the city. Somebody has, I'm hearing some echoes in the background. But I, I, I think this is a great opportunity to make some much-needed improvements to our IT architecture that we've needed for a long time, that, and, and it doesn't require purchasing any equipment. All of the, the suggestions that I've made are month-to-month subscriptions. But I think moving to the cloud, cloud storage services and Microsoft Office in the cloud, that's where all these other government agencies are, are, have gone. And I think Minutrisa is just way behind the curve. And this, this is an opportunity to, to increase our remote operations and, and just be more efficient. And, and provide a great service to our, our residents too, if they could. There, there are so many forms that you can do online with Office three sixty-five. Virtually, there would be no reason for, for residents to come to City Hall ever again if you had Office sixty-five and, and you use their, the apps that are included with it. So I'd, I'd encourage you to read this over and I'd encourage you to read this over and consider it because I think it would be a great opportunity for the city to take advantage of this money to do that. Plus, you could, you could spend some of this money on training, um, training staff and council how to use things like, like go-to-meeting or, uh, or Zoom meetings or, or functional in a better way, because I, I, I know there's, there's capacity for that.
Okay, so I think, um, you, you made a, um, a statement that I, uh, fully agree with. I, if we go down this path, first of all, um, I would want to hire a consultant to come in and tell us what we need, when we need it, what the costs are going to be, not just to get it all set up, but then ongoing costs as well. And how will that impact, um, our ongoing budgets? That's number one. Number two, I guess, my question to staff and maybe Ron Beatty or whoever wants to weigh in, um, maybe we can pay for the consulting fee out of our COVID money. Um, I'm not sure how, but maybe. If not, and then the other question would be, can we use the CARES Act dollars for this type of IT improvement? I guess that would be my question. Mr. Barone or Mr. Beatty or anybody?
Well, you know, I, Ron and I talked about this and he can certainly chime in and correct me if I'm wrong. So there's kind of two things going on here. There's the CARES Act money, which is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And then there's our city budget. And so if we can utilize the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to cover our police expenses starting March first, then we can free up money that's currently in our budget, which is not CARES money, but our money, and utilize that any way we like. We could use it for IT needs as Councilmember Bruce is talking about it, could be for roads. It could be to buy Barone a new car. I mean, no, I'm teasing. But my whole point is that you could be, it could be any mix of items because you'll be using city money, not the, the money that, uh, is through the CARES Act. CARES Act would cover our police from March first till whenever we spent the last dollar, which I believe is probably sometime in August, cause it's about sixty thousand dollar payroll per pay period or per month. Brian, if you correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, we're, we're going to buzz through that. So, um, I don't know if, um, there is a difference between those two. So I, I just want the council to understand that, that, um, when we are talking about spending this money, you have to specify what we're spending it on. I mean, there are so many things that they're just, they're eligible expenses through the CARES money, but there's way more things we could do after we have used that money to pay for those eligible expenses that get freed up, so to speak, in our budget.
So a question for you, Mr. Barone, is if, if, if we did use the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand for public safety payroll.
Right.
That's five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars would be, that would be reflected in our tax levy.
I don't know the ins and outs of that. I'll have to ask Mr. Grimm to chime in on that, but, you know.
I would think it would have to be because it.
Yeah, yeah. We've never had to deal with a pandemic and getting, you know, almost six hundred thousand dollars from the feds to, to pay for what we normally would pay for here locally. So, uh, you know, it, it's got to get accounted for somehow. I, I totally agree with that. But, you know, how we do that is to me a bookkeeping thing versus, you know.
Well, it's a bookkeeping thing that affects our tax levy.
It could be, yes. But I mean, that was money that a year ago at this time, we had no idea we would possibly be getting. We just have no way of, yeah.
But, but if, but I, what I'm saying is if we're going to take that money and we're going to spend it on payroll, that's money that we, that we, that our tax levy was, was supposed to be used for. Then that money needs to be reflected in our tax levy need for twenty twenty-one.
Can I, can I chime in here for a minute? This is Councilmember Molitor. Um, so I understand that would work is that it would come in, in the form of the reserves. So I think currently with the budget proposal that's out there, um, we're projecting to spend, uh, a couple hundred thousand of reserves, like one of the numbers I saw was two forty-five. Um, so what would happen in this case is you'd simply have a, a much higher reserve number.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to say, uh, Councilmember Molitor and Bruce and, and, uh, Madam Mayor and Council. Yeah, basically that money that five hundred and seventy-nine thousand would come in as a basically a, a federal reimbursement. It's federal CARES Act dollars. That would be a federal grant or reimbursement basically in the general fund. So that would be five hundred and seventy-nine thousand. That would go to the general fund revenues that obviously wasn't originally budgeted because we didn't know this was going to come when we adopted our budget in December of, um, you know, uh, twenty nineteen. So then it would be, as Councilmember Molitor mentioned, it would be money that would go into the fund balance that would be available to help with the twenty twenty-one budget or to do IT needs or to do various things that council decided to, would want to look into. So if that helps.
But it, it, it would reduce the need for increasing our tax levy. If, if, even if it goes into our reserves, it would reduce the need for increasing the tax levy.
I guess that's what council decided to do. I mean, yeah, whether it was that or whether it's a bump up the reserve level or, or spending some money on some capital improvement needs. I mean, those are all the decisions the council would have to make, correct?
Okay, so, um, maybe Mr. Beatty can speak into this because the, the wording that, that we signed when we requested this money says on the form, it says that, that we agree not to use this money for, for, um, actually the way it says is, these funds will be used by the local government only to cover those costs that were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as March twenty-seven, twenty twenty. And during the webinar, they said, um, there was a caveat and they said unless those funds were substantially dedicated to COVID nineteen activities. And I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how, how the city can, can use the funds this way without, and, and still sign this form that said that we wouldn't use the fun, funds this way.
Madam Mayor, Council, uh, I'm, I am not familiar with the form the city signed, so I don't know exactly what it says. I did not, uh, participate in either of the webinars. I've read the, uh, regulations and it's the same discussion that we had last time. The way I read it is that the ability to use this money for, uh, public safety or public health is an exception, appears, to the general rule about having to, uh, use it directly for things that can specifically be shown for, uh, COVID-related. So that's the basis that I'm seeing and I think others are seeing is the ability to say, even though the police budget, for example, or the police salaries were in a budget that was approved before March twenty-seventh, which was the date the COVID Act was passed, that those are eligible in full for, uh, payment. At least that's, that's the way I'm reading it.
Well, and I, that conflicts with what the form says, which I'm emailing to you right now.
Well, I'm not an accountant, so. Well, I'm not an accountant, so I'm not going to be able to give you a definitive answer.
Yeah. And I, I don't think you need to be an accountant to figure out what, what we just signed and what we agreed to when we, when we accepted those funds. And it, for, for me, I can't approve spending the funds in a way that we agreed not to spend them when we signed the form. That's a problem for me.
For clarification, we haven't, we haven't signed the monthly form that said how we're spending it. That, that, that's one of the things that council has to make a final decision on either in August or September before the reporting period ends up. It's one of the things. It's when you, on your monthly report, they had talked about a checkbox that, about the, the budget item you're, you're referencing. But they also in that same sentence talked about that the local city councils and boards should make a decision as to how they feel comfortable and risk reward spending. And I mean, some of it comes down to, they even said they're not going to be out auditing people. That obviously would be, you know, whether the state would at some point. But these are, are federal funds and we're under even the 750,000, which would trigger a, a single audit by our auditors. So that's all information that the council can use to make a decision on what they want to do.
So the, the form that I'm talking about isn't the reporting form. It's the form that Mr. Brony signed to actually receive the $579,000. That's the form that I'm talking about. It's, it's at the revenue, the Department of Revenue site. And I just emailed the, the form to Mr. Beatty. But that's, that's the form where you sign and you agree that you will not spend the money in the way that we're saying we're going to spend it. And, and I can, I can send this to, Mr. Brony, I, I think should send this form to the other council members so they can see that we've agreed not to, not to use the money for anything that was in the budget prior to March 27th. Unless those funds were substantial, or those, um, the, the personnel was substantially diverted to COVID-19 activities. So I, I don't see a way around that. Mr. Beatty seems to, but I, I don't see it.
Madam Mayor Council, Brian, have you talked to the city's auditor about this?
Um, I have not specifically asked them about, uh, about this. Yeah, I, I can follow up with them and see if they've got anything they want to, but, um, I know the, the state hasn't been real. Um, they've really hedged on, uh, leaving it up to local boards. They've made a reference at, uh, this same webinar that some states have decided just that police payrolls kind of cross the board and they're not even going to ask about it. You know, some states, Minnesota, sort of taken more of a middle position where maybe you can do it, maybe you can't as far as this, putting this, you know, is it in the budget, but is it substantially different? I think it'd be nice if the state just put out some clear, clear, uh, clear guidance, but they seem to refuse to do it so far.
Well, Brian, the reason I ask that question is I think it'd be worth checking with the city's auditor. I know as a matter of fact that a number of cities have checked with their auditors and that's, this does seem to be their position.
Yeah, I can do that. Yep.
Well, I'm back.
There you go.
Yeah. So Mike, you gave me the wrong number.
Sorry, Lisa.
All right. That's okay. Anyhow, um, where are we at here?
Well, we were talking about using the CARES funds, so.
Okay. All right. And, uh, the consensus is?
We're going to check.
Okay. All right. You're going to check what?
Check some more. Uh, Ron just brought up the, uh, idea of checking with our auditor. He mentioned that several cities have checked with their auditors and it's their position as well, that what, that has what I've been stating and that we are able to use this CARES money for, uh, police cost reimbursement. So.
Okay. So we can bring this back at the, uh, August 17th meeting then?
We certainly can. Like I said, you may have missed this, but, uh, our reporting, um, you have to report each month, but if you report a zero, there's no plus or minus towards your city for doing so. They just want to make sure that you are reporting in. And if, since we're not coming to any sort of resolution tonight, we certainly can, um, just postpone that and just report a zero to the.
Okay. I just, okay. I want to make sure we don't lose out on, on.
Right. I mean, if you don't report, that's a bad thing. So.
Okay. All right. So then we can report the end of August for, um, funding for March through August or?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I think we file that report in September, for the August report would be filed in September. So now we'd just be filing a zero report in July, in August here, and then we can always file, uh, in the subsequent month, you file whatever eligible expenses you feel comfortable with at some point.
Okay. But just a question, um, will that kind of raise some red flags or will it be kind of questionable if we all of a sudden put in for the whole amount or something, if that's what we end up doing?
No. They were, they quite specific on that. There, there's no negative to not reporting. So you just have to report. If report a zero, that's better than not reporting at all. So.
All right. Okay. Um, the rest of the council, okay with that, bringing it back after checking with our auditor then? Mike, you okay with that?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Mr. Chumperlin?
I agree. There needs to be, for me, more definition. I hear what Ms. Bruce is saying and I've, in the little reading I've done, because there's a plethora of different sources out there as normal, uh, I've seen that statement about not previously budgeted items. So, um, the bottom line is, uh, if other cities are doing it and legal feels that it still is acceptable, I would like to have a little bit of confidence level on that. So maybe we can find out from auditors what's going on or if there is, I'm sure this is, uh, there's more info coming out probably about every week. So, uh, hopefully in two weeks we have a clearer picture.
Yeah. Right. Okay. And Ms. Bruce, are you okay with that, bringing that back in two weeks?
Yep, that's fine.
All right. And Ms. Mortenson?
Um, yes, I agree, uh, with what John said about having more definition, but I would even like to get in writing, if possible, that this is 100% approved, that we can use it for public safety because there would be nothing worse to spend the money and then budget for 2021, only to come back and say, you can't use the money for that.
All right. Well, that's my, was my comment earlier on in our work session, whereas I don't want to spend this money prior to, um, you know, I don't think it should be part of our 2021 budget at this point. So we'll bring it back, see what, what we find out in two weeks and, uh, have a, another, hopefully short discussion about that. So with that, um, I think that concludes the, um, CARES Act funding and we'll move on to, um, reports. Do we have any, um, staff reports? Mr. Brony?
I just had unmute myself. Sorry, Mayor. Uh, so Mayor Council, a couple of items to bring up. Um, did attend the July 22 Mount Fire Commission meeting. It was, uh, remote. Um, at that meeting, um, they discussed their budget for 2021. We have a 1.43% increase for our city. And then they also found out last Friday that they were, they received about $151,000 grant. It's a grant through FEMA and through AFG, which is the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. And they submitted their grant, uh, for critical safety equipment, which is the SCBAs, the Self-contained Breathing Apparatus. Their stuff is quite old, 17 years, obsolete, need a replacement. And this, I believe is going to cover a good 75% of the cost of replacing that. So, uh, also coming up with Mount Fires, we're going to have another meeting this Friday at 9:00 AM. This is the discussion about the Fire District with the administrators and managers along with the mayors. And probably from that meeting, we'll probably have something to bring back to the council to discuss. That was kind of the game plan going into this meeting. I assume it will stay the same, but sometime later in August, you, the, this council should be seeing something about that. Um, other couple of things going on, we'll have another water treatment plant update meeting next week on the 11th. I did include the minutes from the last meeting, uh, in the info packet, if you want to read about that. And then for council elections.
Water, water treatment plant or water council, um, water tower?
Water tower. I, I got W T.
Water towers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Water towers. Thank you.
Yes. No treatment plant yet. Uh, and then filing ends for council positions on Tuesday, the 11th. And every time we have a, uh, election year, uh, the day after the filing ends, we have a candidate info meeting. This will probably be a virtual one. First time we've done that. And that will be held on Wednesday, the 12th. And we'll be sending out, whoever files, we'll be sending out invitations to participate in that on Wednesday, like I said, the 12th at 3:00 PM. It'll be, uh, myself and, uh, Chris Lindquist. Uh, that's what I have. And so I think we, I don't think anybody else other than the city engineer, uh, has an, an item or two to discuss.
I had a question for you, Mr. Brony.
Yes.
Uh, the, the Fire District meeting Friday at 9:00 AM, is that a Zoom meeting?
You know, I think it's an in-person meeting.
And because I'm, I'm the council liaison for both Mount Fire and St. Bonnie, I'd like to attend that.
It's, Ms. Bruce, I'm sorry. It's, um, was by invitation of the Fire Chief and he extended the invitation to the mayor and the city administrators of, of St. Bonnie, Mount, Minatrisa and Spring Park. So, um, it does not include the, um, commissioners, the fire commissioners.
So there aren't any other commissioners from any other cities attending these meetings or the past ones?
Correct.
No, it's, uh, it's.
We only had one.
Yeah. We had one before. It's, uh, mayors and city administrators. Uh, Mayor Ritsonoya was there. I was there. Um, Mayor Salazar was invited. So it's, it's mayors and, and the administrators only. There are no commissioners. Yeah, of course, of, um, Mount and, uh, St. Bonnie Fire Chiefs.
Bonnie Fire Chiefs.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. All right. Um, Ms. Fowski, did you have a, uh, report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. At the last council meeting, um, when the council accepted the quotes and awarded the contract to W. Mueller for the overlay, um, the question came up if fielding could be added to the project. Um, after the, as, as council may recall, there was some discussion on, um, how much, how much, um, additional work could be added to the contract and if we would be triggering, um, any threshold. Um, so subsequent to that meeting, uh, city staff and the city attorney's office had a discussion and, um, we came to the conclusion very quickly that since this is not a Chapter 429 project, we are not bound by that, uh, 25% increase, um, that was discussed at the council meeting. Um, so with, to add fielding into the project, uh, which the contractor has agreed to, um, the unit prices that he quoted for the original, uh, quote of work that the council has awarded, um, we would be bringing, um, so the original project was at $93,944, $944.90. Um, adding fielding in brings us up another $34,203.87, um, to bring the total amount to $128,198.77, which is under the $175,000 limit for a quote. Um, so, um, based on our discussions, we feel that, um, if the council would like to look at adding fielding into the project, um, we don't see any concerns with doing so. And if, uh, the council would like to, we can bring it in as a change order at the next council meeting for consideration.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think we basically said at the last council meeting, if we can do it, um, and still fall within the budgeted amount, as well as all of the other things that you mentioned, we'd be willing to go forward with this. But I'll just check again. Uh, Mr. Maliter, are you still on board with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And Mr. Chumperlin?
Agreed.
Okay. And Ms. Mortenson?
Yes.
And, um, Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
All right. So, uh, you'll bring that change order back, um, at our next council meeting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Ms. Fowski?
Uh, not at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I do have something.
Yes.
Um, this is Chris Lindquist, the city clerk. I just want to remind anybody, and if anybody asks you, um, if they want to file for, um, candidacy, to call and make an appointment with me, because I'm not always at City Hall. So, um, it would be nice if we could just set up an appointment and then I can meet them at City Hall to do the affidavit of candidacy. And that isn't, that is until 5:00 on Tuesday, the 11th.
All right. Thank you for that reminder. All right. Anybody else, um, any other staff reports? All right. With that, um, council reports, uh, we'll start with, um, I'll start out real quick. Um, I attended the, uh, Planning Commission meeting Monday night and I will also be attending the Fire District meeting coming up on Friday, as Mr. Brony, uh, stated. With that, I'll pass it on to Ms. Mortenson.
Uh, WCC is not, uh, hosting meetings yet. Um, so it's a month by month thing. So no, nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Maliter?
Uh, nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chumperlin?
Uh, Pioneer Sarah Creek, last Thursday, the 30th, they held, uh, an online through Zoom public input forum for interested parties to ask questions regarding the fourth, uh, gen plan. A lot of questions from Lake Independence Citizens Association and from the Lake Sarah Improvement Association, as one would expect to, two big lakes. So, um, there was a lot of good input. Uh, the open, the, uh, comments and feedbacks, feedback on it are still available through August 26th. And that can be done on, uh, their website, Pioneer Sarah Creek website. That was it.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Ms. Bruce?
Uh, Mr. Brony stole my thunder with, uh, the fire report for Mount. But one of the things that, uh, Chief Peterson did talk about, um, they're now starting to notify first responders when they go out to events if there's anyone on site that has been, um, identified that has symptoms of COVID-19. And I asked Mr. Peterson what those numbers were. And since April 1st, uh, he said there have been less than 10. And he also said that six to eight weeks ago, um, there had only been one confirmed case on calls that they, they'd been called to. So that's just an FYI. That's all I have.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Um, I think that the, um, the possibility of knowing whether people have had symptoms, I think that just started recently. Do you know when that started, when they were able to find that out?
Um, he, he said since April 1st is when they've, when they've been doing that.
Oh, monitoring that? Okay. All right.
Yeah. So they, if they ask when they get the call, if there's anyone on site that has symptoms, then they notify the firefighters.
All right. Thank you. All right. So that concludes all of our, um, items on our agenda. And, uh, if there is a motion to adjourn, we can be adjourned.
John T.
Mr. Chumperlin, Mr. Chumperlin made it first, so he made the motion and I'll give the second to Ms. Mortenson. So with that, all those in favor signify with aye. Um, aye, Lisa Whalen, Pam Mortenson.
Aye.
John Chumperlin.
Aye.
Shannon Bruce.
Aye.
Mike Maliter.
Aye.
All those in favor, against, none. So motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. And we will be talking in a couple of weeks. Thanks. Bye.